I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is stand. One nation, united in the business of the game, just for us.
Morning, everybody. I'll go ahead and I would consider a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is that Commissioner Gibbon?
Correct.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll go ahead and move on to our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Go ahead. Come on up and just state your name and address.
Morning. My name is Tim Dundalk, 46785 290th Street, Beersford, South Dakota.
Go ahead.
All right. I came this morning just to voice my concern with the odor model and how it restricts dairy expansion in Lincoln County. I own and operate Dakota Plains Dairy in southwest Lincoln County. And I just wanted to go over the financial and economic impact it has on the county for our business today and how we would like to expand it. So currently, we milk about 12,000 cows and we employ 66 people. And the average benefits of the employees is $78,389. Average milk production is 800,000 pounds a day. And just in local repairs to like Ace Hardware, the welding shop, yearly is about 1.5 million. And we have spent over 70 million in Lincoln County. And for example, on the impact it has on the grain industry in the area, every 10,000 milking cows impacts about 30,000 acres between soybean meal, distillers, corn silage, ground corn, and other commodities. And just with the odor model today, it prevents us from expanding. And we would like to expand and spend more money in Lincoln County. And previously, we built, six years ago we started, and the setback was three quarters of a mile. And that was already compared to other states we've been in, kind of restrictive, but we worked around it and it's, we're very happy in Lincoln County. But if we could go back to the way it was or have some leeway where we can get around an odor model, because in the dairy industry today, if you don't build a, if you can't get over 5, 6,000 head, it just economies of scale, bring us down competitively. And we would have to look in another county to expand. So if we can get above that and still be at the three quarters, we're fine with that. But it just restricts dairy expansion in Lincoln County in the future. And it also restricts the possibility of cheese plants or processing coming to the area. So if there is less milk here.
Thank you. Your comments are well noted.
All right. Tim Dundalk, D-E-N-D-U-L-K. And then with Dakota Plains.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Schmidt.
I would like to put that on his concerns on next week's agenda, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, let me, I was just, a question for Toby. Toby, weren't we looking at, is that still tabled?
It was denied, so it happened to be brought back up.
So it was denied, so that, because we had an option to take that odor footprint, odor plan off of there, but we didn't, did we?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it being put back on the agenda for discussion. So we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? If not, we will go ahead and move on to our regular business with the first reading.
Do we have no commissioner reports?
Oh, I'm just skipping all you guys. Are there any commissioner reports? Commissioner Schmidt, do you have any report?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No, I do not.
Okay, how about you, Commissioner Aaron's? All right, there aren't any. And I, I don't have one. So then we'll move on to regular business with the first reading.
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, reasoning the property legally described as the north half, northeast quarter, except Long Track 1 and the Meadow at Spring Creek. Section 27, Township 100 North, Wright 49 West, from the A-1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. Location is parcel ID 100 49271010.
Good morning. As was just mentioned, this is an application from John Swerksley to change his own approximately 43 acres from the A-1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District. Mr. Swerksley did submit a preliminary plan in conjunction with this application, which you also will hear at the August 3 meeting. That application is showing a subdivision of approximately 29 lots for future single-family residential development on the property. This property is approximately three miles to the northeast of the city of Harrisburg, just across the street from where the joint jurisdictional boundary exists with the city of Sioux Falls. This area is within the city of Harrisburg's growth area, but it's not identified because of equidistant territory as their subdivision authority. As I mentioned, Mr. Swerksley did submit a preliminary plan with the application. There are some changes, though, that are being requested for the preliminary plan. First and foremost is that the highway superintendent has determined that there is not an availability for two accesses onto the property, so they're going to restrict it to one access. So this will have to be redrawn for that. As well as some additional concerns with drainage on the property. There is an existing subdivision to the east of this property. It's become our knowledge within the last few weeks that this subdivision has developed or placed a drain tile from their property along the county right-of-way down to the creek down, or I should say, north of this property here. And so there is some concerns, is one, that would be a non-conforming drain tile in the county right-of-way, as well as what impacts this proposal would have on that. Staff did recommend denial of this application. According to the comprehensive plan, this is a future agricultural area. And again, it's outside of a growth area, it's outside of a subdivision authority of municipality, so it doesn't meet those criteria for approval. However, the adjacent properties are like zoning and the proposed use would be appropriate for this area. But because of that, staff did recommend denial of this application. And as mentioned, just previously, the planning commission did also recommend denial of this application unanimously. So with that, it happens to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time. This is, again, the first reading of this application, the second reading in public hearing, along with the preliminary plan will be at your August 3 meeting.
Toby, is there any other investigation going on of that non-conformity?
Not that I'm completely aware of. We did make legal counsel aware of it. We have Terry and I in communication to determine if there was any permits or anything authorized for it. No.
So by August 3, though, staff will have kind of an understanding and kind of a better picture of what that entails.
Thank you. That was my question, too, was what was going on with that drain tile. All right. Anybody else have any questions for staff? If not, we'll move on to our 2022 Budget Work Session. Thank you, Toby.
So the last time we met, we went through a lot of the budgets, with the exception of the sheriff in the building. So we'll start with sheriff's budget. And Steve is here to present on it.
It goes up a little bit every year.
Could whoever's on the telephone mute their, I don't know about you, but that just bugs
We have added some cars, the MRAP, so some of the increase from 19 to 20, we show there,
the heck out of me.
but it's, it should stay relatively the same.
Yeah.
And I think people listening at home may, yeah, thank you.
So at 27.5. Fees and contracts, that number's a little fluid because I think, and I don't think I would agree. That's much better.
Good morning, Sheriff.
we're going to do it now this year, we were going to have IT take over all computer programming, Good morning. Okay, Steve Swenson, Lincoln County Sheriff. which would include our CAD system. I wasn't here last time, so I'm not 100% sure how you want me to do this. So it's in, it's in my budget for X-ray machine out front, central square, which is, is the
Well, just run us through your numbers. I guess.
Okay, I don't have anything in the wages. CAD system, live scan fingerprint machine, metal detector, animal control contract, TASER contracts, the South Dakota Sheriff's Association membership, and Zerker Consulting, that's, again, our CAD system. The auditor's office is working on that, so that's new this year. So that's where that $40,000 is being spent.
Sure.
Insurance, I was going to go through kind of what these all cover, so you guys know. Repairs and maintenance, that is our vehicle repairs. I knew I should do this on the computer. That number's starting to kind of come down now that we've gotten some better vehicles or more mile vehicles. Last 12 months, we are running at... For this year, we're at $16,572 in repairs. Last year, the total was, I believe, $42,000. So we're at about a 15 or 16% reduction in that if we maintain a wrecked car. That could change all that, or... But that's where that number's at. That's what that number covers. Fuel, kind of a guessing game with the prices doing what they're doing. Last year, we were able to get most of our fuel at gas stations, so our number's down a little bit. Due to COVID, we, we were saving about 15 to 20 cents a gallon purchasing fuel from, from gas stations. That's changed. We're back at the county shop because now the gas station prices are higher than the county price. Supplies and materials, I haven't got this number figured out yet, to be honest with you. I keep missing it drastically, and a lot of that is because of the new deputies we're adding to uniform them and outfit them, is about $6,000 a deputy. I'm happy to report that we are fully staffed as of next Monday. Our, our final deputy will, will be starting. So we will be fully staffed, so that number should level out. So I'm hoping that, that comes down to the 55,000 mark. Traveling conference, that's been covering our training. So these numbers actually have been changed since, since this is, traveling conference, I believe I have at $6,000 and training at $20,000. And that before was combined. The auditor asked that we break that up a little bit, so it's more, gives a better picture of what we're doing.
Steve, are you have, or do you have officers that need to be certified yet?
We will, Deputy Zongo will be attending the academy in Sioux Falls, starting in August. That, that's no charge to the county, other than we pay the wage. And then we have a kid from South Carolina that will be starting next Monday. And with any luck, he, his route would be passing the South Dakota reciprocity, so he wouldn't have to go to the academy.
Was he, how successful was the $5,000 bonus for previously certified?
Very. Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we picked up a, a kid from the Pennington County Sheriff's Office who started yesterday. I think it was a great pickup. But that's the incentive to get these, because the pay is about the same, insurance is about the same. But, you know, his was about location and that 5,000 helps them move and keeps us from, from sending them to the academy for three months. And it's a win-win, in my opinion, anyway. Yeah, it's been huge. Like I say, this is the first time we've been fully staffed since I arrived, so. It was a good deal. Utilities, that number's, is gone up double from last year, not quite double, but that's because we're, we're paying our AT&amp;T Connect to our computers and the AT&amp;T cellphone bills out of that now. We weren't doing that before, we didn't have cellphones before. So that, that's why that number went up. On the flip side of that, we're not paying a stipend for cellphones anymore. Prisoner care, favorite one. So those numbers dropped during COVID, probably 25, 30%. And then, for whatever reason, they've shot way up. So I was budgeting at the 2.1 million would have, was for 57 inmates, I believe. We have been averaging 55 to 59 this year. And it's, it's on track for, for July to be the same. So with any uptick, and if you, if we use the calls for service scale, they're up 20, 25% this year. So if that jail number tracks that, I think we're going to probably be looking at 65 inmates as an average for next year, which is why I asked the auditor to bump that number up to 2.5 million.
Steve, is your calls for service up when you say up 25%? Is that over COVID or is that over what your baseline?
Some of it, some of it is, no, it's, and I printed off about 8,000 sheets here. So in 2018, I'm just going to give you the total, and I can email you guys these, too, but 2018, we had 7,905 total calls for service. Last year, we had 11,000, correction, 2019, we had 11,696 calls for service. Last year, 13,119. And this year, we're at 8,670. So COVID doesn't appear to affect our calls for service. It did affect our jail population because they were, they were letting people out for more serious crime because of COVID than they are now. But it's just, it's, it's busy. It's really gotten busy, and, and part of it is we've added deputies, too. So you had, you take that into consideration, but it's, it's busy out there.
They're discovering more.
Right.
If you had a smaller force, they wouldn't see as much.
Yep. We, we can be a little bit more proactive than reactive. Our, I can tell you that the big thing that's changed is our burglaries. We're, we're having six to seven of a week in 2019, 2020. And with the extra manpower, we've been able to sit in some of those locations, and we've got them down to one or two a week. So that's a, that's pretty significant, because those were very time-consuming. So things are just, it's busy. Lot of out-of-state people moving here and keeping us going. All right. Now, the medical, prisoner medical cost is a guessing game. With the way it was going this year, I thought we were going to be over-budgeted for medical because we were just running quite a bit lower. Soon as I did the budget, we had a gentleman spend five days in the hospital that was an inmate, and now we have an inmate with stage four cancer. So I'm guessing this 90,000 that I anticipated for, for this year is not going to cover that now. However, do we have those scenarios next year? Will 73,000 cover it? It's just a guessing game. Fuel for transports stays the same as last year at $10,000. Electronic monitoring's pretty fixed, because we know the number of, that's, that's for rental of the ankle monitors monthly, and that stays pretty consistent.
That's pretty much passed through, too, to the defendant, right?
Right. Yeah, there's revenue. And I think it's a little over $100,000 a year that program generates. Computer software, change that to zero. I don't see any, anything that we need that IT won't supply. Motor vehicles, you see, there's a, there's a pretty good increase from last year to this year. We currently have 25 patrol vehicles, one UTV and one MRAP in our inventory. We have one, two. Our school resource officer has 132,000 miles on his vehicle. One of our detectives is driving a vehicle with 142,000. We have three vehicles in patrol, four, five, five vehicles, scratch it, three vehicles in patrol with, one has 109, one, one 124 and one 25. And then we have one in the jail division with 160. So a total of seven vehicles with over 100,000 miles on them. They just, they become a, a maintenance nightmare. They're really not safe for patrol when they get up that high. And that 125,000 miles, probably the sweet spot for a patrol car. The jail division, just depends on the car. This one with 160,000, the, the maintenance hasn't been bad on it, but it's, it's not a car we can send to California to pick up an inmate. We gotta shuffle cars around. So it's my recommendation that we, we, sorry, I can't see anymore. And then the, the other part of that is that we have a 19-2, which is year 19, 2019 car. Those cars that were bought in 19 have 76, 96, 72,000 miles on it. So they'll, next year, they'll be up over 100,000. So if we don't continue this pace, we're going to fall behind, which, which we are behind. So it's my recommendation that we replace six cars for next year. We'll be able to keep a couple of these cars that are, that are not in terrible shape, that they'll work in the jail division for another year, get us by for another year.
Steve, what do we do in order to avoid, in the future? Because it seems like a perfect storm right now. You know, you get hit, you got all these vehicles with all the mileage. What do we do in order to create some kind of, some kind of rotation where you're feathering in or, you know, rotating in new vehicles or purchasing, you don't have to purchase a bulk of your fleet every six years?
So, so I ran a mileage report. We're putting on about 330,000 miles a year, department-wide. So if we can get caught up and get on a rotation of three to four cars a year, if you use that 100,000 mark as kind of your replacement goal, then by the time they get here and get built and there's another 10,000 miles. But if you use that or even the 125,000 mark, if we can get caught up and just kind of monitor our annual mileage, okay, if we get up to 400,000, then it'd be four a year, but then it should, it should level out.
Right.
That's, that was, that's kind of my goal. I thought I was getting there with a four at a time, but it's, the first cars I bought are now at 100,000 miles, which is crazy.
And then, because we're, because we added deputies and we're at 100% now, or we'll be here in a week, is that also why we had to buy more vehicles, too? Or not?
Right. We, we needed to add two. We added seven deputies, which translated into two cars.
Okay.
And they share a car. So if I work day shift, my four days, I have a car.
They hot-seat them.
Yep. And then at the end of that four days, he switches with the next guy that goes to his shift. So, and it works really well. So.
When you say seven deputies, does that mean within the last 12 months?
No, it's seven deputies in the last three years.
Okay.
And, and I brought that, and I requested another deputy for next year, based on the population and policing models. You're supposed to have a deputy per 1,000 people. Lincoln County adds 3,000 people a year. Lot of those are in the northern part that are policed by other police as well. So I think if we may, we, I think we're in a really good spot now, and if we maintain that, kind of the same as the car thing, if we add one a year versus falling way behind and needing three and four, I think this would be a good model. If we're adding 3,000 people a year, take 50% of those are going to belong to us, and add a, add a police officer a year, and that would fit that, that policing.
Did you say a deputy for every 3,000 people?
No, 1,000 is the, is the, what the FBI recommends. I do believe 1,500 is a safe number in rural South Dakota, so to speak. So, because we're in a really good spot now, I just don't want to fall behind again. And we've, you know, we've, Lincoln County, right now, has two deputies working at all times, which has never happened before.
Which is good for safety.
Huge.
Steve, the six vehicles that you are looking to purchase, what kind are they? Are they all going to be SUVs?
Yeah, that, so unfortunately, the Ford or the Dodge Durango, scratch that, Dodge Charger no longer makes the Hemi all-wheel-drive car. So you can only get the Hemi in just a rear-wheel car, not ideal for South Dakota. So we've moved to the Ford Explorer. But the Ford Explorer, the Dodge Durango, the Ford pickups, Tahoe, they're all pretty much the same price, and they're so much better for what we do as deputies. You know, the, the Chargers are high maintenance, they're really fast, but they're not built for county roads and gravel roads and section lines. And so our, I think that's another reason our maintenance prices has gone down, because we're not replacing radiators and railroads.
Well, I think, you know, when you look at the Sioux Falls Police Department and you look at their SUVs, seem to be the rule of the day.
Yeah. Right. They're the same price, get about the same gas mileage, their, their maintenance has been better. So, and we've tried, since I've been here, we've tried the Durango, been great, but it's a little slow. The Ford pickups are, have been outstanding, and now these Ford Explorers. So we can keep in that rotation, that way the equipment switches from one vehicle and the next.
So to Commissioner Aaron's point, which is well-made, we took, we look at six this year and then possibly four subsequently every year thereafter. Is that, is that kind of the program?
That, that is, that is the way it looks to me. We're putting 330,000 miles on. Now, now, keep in mind, if we wreck a car, you know, we had a, we had a car deer accident not too long ago. The car was savable, but say, it was getting, it was right on the bubble where they could have totaled that car. Then we're, that can put us behind, but knock on wood, we have, we've, we've had two really good years of, of guys, gals are taking good, good care of the equipment.
And these are all off-state bids, right?
Yes.
Steve, one of the comments I hear out in the public, and I think some folks don't understand, so I want to give you an opportunity to explain this.
Well, I think, you know, when you look at the Sioux Falls Police Department and you look at their SUVs seem to be the rule of the day.
Yeah, right. Well, they're the same price, get about the same gas mileage, their, their maintenance has been better. So, and we've tried, since I've been here, we've tried the Durango, been great, but it's a little slow. The Ford pickups are, have been outstanding, and now these Ford Explorers. So we can keep in that rotation, that way the equipment switches from one vehicle and next, it's.
So to Commissioner Aaron's point, which is well made, we took, we look at six this year and then possibly four subsequently every year thereafter. Is that, is that kind of the program?
That, that is, that is the way it looks to me. We're putting three hundred and thirty thousand miles on. Now, now, keep in mind, if we wreck a car.
Yeah.
You know, we had a, we had a car deer accident not too long ago. The car was savable, but say, it was getting, it was right on the bubble where they could have totaled that car. Then we're, that can put us behind, but knock on wood, we have, we've, we've had two really good years of, of guys, gals are taking good, good care of the equipment.
And these are all off-state bids, right?
Yes.
Steve, one of the comments I hear out in the public, and I think some folks don't understand, so I want to give you an opportunity to explain this. One of the criticisms I hear with the model of one deputy for every one thousand people is most of that growth is occurring in Sioux Falls, and the Sioux Falls PD patrols all curb and gutter in Sioux Falls. Can you kind of help the public understand how an increase in population affects crime overall? Even though the Sioux Falls Police Department may be patrolling the area where all the growth is occurring?
So that, that was, and I did not bring that, that paperwork up here. That, that's why I'm saying when, when Sioux Falls or Lincoln County is growing by three thousand people a year, fifteen hundred, I'm saying half of those are probably in that jurisdiction. Some of them are over in the T area, which is also policed by their own police department. Um, however, anybody that moves into the county that we are required to do civil service on, it just, it, it increases our workload. Our civil service, we serve three thousand, uh, twenty-nine hundred and twenty-four in twenty-twenty, and we're at seventeen fifty-seven, so about the same pace for this year. But that's, the year before was twenty-two hundred, so it's going up. Bad math here, ten, fifteen percent a year right now. And that, so that drives our calls for service. That takes a deputy to go serve those papers. But, you know, you, if you move to T and you wreck at Louise Avenue and two seventy-first, that's us. If you go to Baker's Crossing, that's us. If you go to Spring Creek, that's us. So there's, there's, those people are still moving about the county, and anything that happens or, or they drift out of Sioux Falls to do the burglaries and their, the meth deals, that, that crowd, that big population right at our border drives crime because they, they move out in the county to do their, either, either north or south, to do their crime.
And you got an interstate where a lot of drugs move up and down I-29.
Right.
Crime that goes with that.
You know, that's, and that's an excellent, that interstate brings a lot of work. It's, you know, they're getting off at the truck stops, they're, they're getting off at the exits and, and I think that was a lot of our burglary issues. But go down on I-29, it's, it's a busy, busy road and, and, uh, you know, I, I don't, I don't have the calls for service at that interstate. But we take nearly all accidents on that interstate. So, just, it's just more and more people are moving around.
Steve, I'm sure you and your organization and the sheriffs across the state have looked at this pending marijuana thing. You got medical, which probably is not going to be the, uh, situation because it's kind of a precursor to, uh, if recreational comes in. Do you have any, any thoughts at this time on, on how that will affect you on this thing? It might get more difficult because?
Well, s- some of it is, is, uh, you know, it's, it's, to be political about it, the, the people voted for it, so we'll, we'll deal with it. On the flip side of that, if we're gonna have, uh, grow operations and dispensaries here that aren't gonna be allowed in other counties, that will again drive customers out of Sioux Falls to our locations, which become, will become the responsibility of the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. These will also be out in the rural areas, which, I, I don't know what the, the burglary rate or the crime rate that those facilities will bring, but I, I imagine it will, it will tax us in some way. Uh, whether they're, what kind of security they have, that kind of stuff is all, all will be learned, but I, I've yet to see a drug make society a better place.
Well, I think we're gonna have a lot of social expenses that we don't anticipate. But, you know, when you start talking about, I don't, we're not gonna get off on the weeds on that, but I just think it's gonna make your job much more difficult.
Well, it, I'm sure there'll be some challenges to it.
Anybody else? All right, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
What do we got next, Sherri?
It's John on the phone. We, uh, John's off-site right now. John's off-site right now, so we're trying to get him on the phone.
Okay.
To go over his budget.
I think that's right. Is this right?
John Rambo or John Peters?
Rambo.
John Rambo.
What page is that on?
Yeah, what page is that?
He would be under the general government building. The four-six-one. Four-one-six-one. He's on the phone. Go ahead, John.
Good morning, John.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me okay?
I can, uh, we're just trying to find you in our.
I haven't found it yet. Have you found it? I haven't either. Too far? I have the sheriff's, I can hear him before the sheriff's.
Hey, listen for it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, go ahead, John.
So, uh, it felt like I just had an echo there.
We, we can hear you fine.
Okay. So, uh, much like Steve said, obviously, all the personnel stuff is all dealt with through the auditor this year. So I will just jump right into insurance. Um, I, I basically left that the same as last year or that, this current year at forty-five thousand dollars. My profession, my professional fees is like all the inspections that we're mandated to do, like for the elevator and fire suppression and all that, and also our contract with G and R on, uh, the HVAC system. And I left that the same this year because that was pretty much locked in. Um, my repairs and maintenance, I also left the same as this year at forty-five thousand dollars. Um, supplies and materials, I did increase because I saw a shortfall. So I upped it to forty-five thousand dollars now. I did lower that this year because I didn't think I'd have the kind of COVID expense I had last year, but, uh, it seems like I'm gonna be high again, so I did need that to catch that shortfall. Um, travel and conference, I left the same as this year. Utilities, I also left the same as this year. So that brings us to buildings and structures. So, uh, I, I know I was probably reaching, but I put down, uh, demolishing the old jail again on this year's budget request. I, I had a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, I have talked to at least one, uh, company that would do it for far less than that. Um, of course, hard to say until the jobs bid. But, uh, I just wanted to keep that on your guys' radar so we know that it's gotta get done. Um, but I also know what else is going on in the realm of, uh, the courts building and everything. So, um, uh, I just, I, I guess I, that's why I didn't include it as a parking lot this time. I just was thinking, the jail's gotta come down at some point, we should do it this year. Um, the, updating the mechanical engineering plans. As you know, we've done quite a few different electrical upgrades, uh, in the four years I've been here, and our plans that currently are on file are kind of getting out of date. So this would allow us to basically have another, uh, set of plans that would be accurate, and that's about six thousand dollars. Um, fifteen thousand dollars for the stairwell painting project. Um, when it, when I look at the building as a whole, our stairwells are getting pretty ugly as far as chip painting and all this, so, uh, I want to start tackling that and, uh, and doing that cleanup. Um, I have carpet and painting in the sheriff's office for forty-five thousand dollars. Now, I'm more than willing to take this off because it obviously, we, if the courts building happens, the sheriff's office goes with it. But just understand that a- as we come with a final fix for admin then, I would like to have that tackled while their building's empty then. So, you know, we'll be, that'll be up for future discussion, I guess. Um, my next thing on the list is the back guano removal and installation replacement. I would like to see this happen this year yet, uh, but I wasn't sure it was doable. It's not in my budget for this year, and I'm not sure where I'm gonna land with money. Um, but I am getting pricing right now for that. Um, just started that process again. But, uh, just know that there's a chance that I might be approaching you guys in the next month to see if we can just push forward to get that done in, in twenty-twenty-one's budget. Um, so the heating addition in off-site storage building, that's, uh, that's the building that we had a discussion with last week as far as, uh, the old, uh, weed shop that's, uh, to the south, three blocks. We have heating units that came out of the wash bays at the, uh, um, highway shop, and I was gonna put them to use by adding them to that. So evidence storage and our storage would have heat in there, and we could utilize it better in the winter months. We also, uh, we kind of need a places to get our snow equipment in to have it thaw off, uh, much like how Terry does. So it would be really nice to be able to get that stuff under some kind of heat. I wouldn't probably run it real warm, but you know, forties, maybe fifty. Um, that's the eight thousand dollars. The next item is demolishing that abated property by the airport, and as Bill has said, that's off the plate right now. So that can be struck off my budget request. That brings us to my next line item, which is improvement other than. I went ahead and added the twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget for, uh, the new veterans memorial. Um, I was contacted by, uh, 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 Dave earlier this week, and I know there's more momentum about moving Canton's memorial back up front again. And they're doing the fundraising again, uh, but obviously, if that money happens, then I don't know how, it would have to get transferred into our, my budget and paid for out of county money, I guess. Uh, uh, that would be a Sherri thing. Next item is back sealing and realigning, uh, re-aligning the existing parking lot behind Sturtevant's. That's definitely a need, it's probably something I should have tried to accomplish this year. Next thing is evidence storage system for the sheriff's office of sixty thousand dollars. Once again, uh, with the assumption that we might be moving forward with another solution for the sheriff's office, that could be struck off my budget, but if that falls apart, we're probably gonna be definitely, definitely needing to make that happen in twenty-twenty-three's budget. The next item is about that off-site storage building. Um, because of the sensitive nature of some of the stuff that's stored in that building, it's, it would be proper to have it under two sets of locks, typically with a fenced-in lock system and then the lock on the door. But some of that would be resolved potentially with the new courts facility with the sheriff's department moving out there. So I suppose that could be struck, but, but it would be, have to just keep in mind that, again, if that project does not happen, we would, uh, we would definitely be needing to probably push that through very quickly in twenty-twenty-three's budget. So then, uh, that takes me to furniture and minor equipment. I, I put sixty thousand dollars in there, uh, and much of that would be for a new pickup to replace the old pickup that came from the transfer station that we used for snow removal. Uh, that, as you know, that's, uh, it originally was the emergency management's pickup, and then it was transferred to the transfer station. And it's set with about two hundred thousand miles on it, and it's really become a maintenance headache to me this summer. So that pickup needs to go away for sure. Uh, the sixty thousand dollars would cover the price of the pickup, and hopefully the new plow in it would also leave me money, you know, to handle any other minor equipment need I would need, which I always have some money in my budget for anyway. So that's the govern, general government buildings part of the budget. Do you guys have any questions about that part?
Um, I do, John. Do you need a new plow for the, uh, replacement pickup?
Maybe, maybe not. I didn't want to say no. Um, but, right, I mean, right now, so I, I'm thinking I would probably put the plow that's on the red pickup on to the pickup I got from the highway department this year. Uh, I think that pickup would handle that size plow no problem. Uh, but that pickup also, just so you know, has about a hundred and forty thousand miles on it. Um, it'll probably be on the list to get replaced, you know, within the next couple of years anyway. But I have to have two plow pickups. It's all, just to, to handle what we do, I gotta have at least two plow pickups. So that's why I didn't want to eliminate the opportunity to, to make that call.
So, so do you have two plows now or you don't?
I do, yes. I got the white pickup that I bought in nineteen.
And then, what's up, what is, what does a new plow run? Do you have any idea?
About five thousand dollars.
Didn't we buy one last year?
Well, that's what I was thinking, and then I'm, I'm just looking at that number of sixty thousand. It seems like we were buying pickups a lot cheaper than that.
Well, I, I've talked to Jared and Terry, and they're saying, you know, off-state bid, I think they got their last ones for about thirty-four, thirty-five.
That's what I thought.
Um, of course, now pricing has gone up considerably with the market the way it is. I don't really know where that'll land. And then, like I said, uh, you know, I typically would have ten to twenty thousand dollars just for other equipment needs. I'm hoping that, I mean, I, I should be a limp through a year if I had to cut that number. But I, I, again, I hate to shoot myself in the foot since I typically do spend money on other equipment needs each year, you know?
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for John? If not, thank you.
No, we would need to move on to the egg building with them.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Won't be quite as long. So, uh, uh, as moving to egg buildings, insurance, I don't, I never, I haven't spent anything on insurance in the past, so I kept that number at zero. Easing contracts, I anticipate as we move into the building of all these egg buildings, I'm gonna need more assistance with, uh, uh, I. uh I-Meg out there uh reserving and removing stakes and whatnot. So I put ten thousand dollars in for that. Uh rentals, I left the same. Repairs and maintenance, I also left the same. Supplies and materials, I also, also left the same. Utilities the same. Land is the same. That's basically the payment for the, the building. Uh, building and structures, uh typically I, the number I had in that was the three hundred and sixty dollars. And that's part of that purchase and I don't remember exactly why that number exists. Maybe interest or something, I don't remember. Uh, but I, I added thirty thousand dollars to that be, originally because I wanted to possibly build a pull barn to put uh additional materials over there and, and also equipment that we're bringing over from the transfer station. That said, uh after talking to Terry, uh the number for the new, if they, if we move forward, which I really hope that we will with uh, uh at least the show ring, that should be listed in my budget and I think that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars what we put in for that. So that's why that number is elevated to a hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. You know, we could fall short on all that if we get the funding to move forward with all the buildings, but I guess we'll deal with that next year if that happens. Then uh improvement other than, I have eighty thousand dollars listed because I'm being told that's what utilities will cost for running the water and all that stuff out there and, you know, and, and that would include one septic system for uh that restroom over there and everything on the far side of the egg buildings. I can't remember honestly right now if that included uh, uh septic upgrades to the main building that exists now. Uh, we've been bouncing back and forth whether we were just gonna put two, two tanks in there or if we would do a full-fledged septic system. And then finally furniture, minor equipment, I, I, I left it the same.
Does anybody have any questions?
John, when you talk about the water and you talk about septics, isn't that something that the, uh, we could use some of that rescue funds for? Because it, those are a couple of areas that uh the Treasury Department has allowed for sewer and water. So if we're putting in uh for water and we're going to upgrade our septics, um, maybe that would, could be covered. And the other part, John, I think what we should look at in the long range would be that uh we're about uh three-quarters of a mile from, I think, the sewer line that runs in Lennox. We should explore possibly putting uh sewer out there as well. Cause we have the funds for it, for a one-time deal, but I'd like to have that explored anyway. Cause I think that would really upgrade your uh, your whole facility.
So ques- question for Sherry. So with the COVID money, I mean, that's not going into a general fund. That's kept separately, correct? So I'm, do, do these things that that money could pay for, do they need to be in the budget?
They would, um. We would probably want them under the ARPA fund. But at this point, we could, since we don't know what we're gonna do, technically we could just say those are gonna be reimbursed from the ARPA fund.
Okay.
Type of thing.
Thank you.
I don't have any budget set up for that right now, cause.
No, I understand. All right, thank you.
So yeah, to answer your question, I obviously don't really have the answers, but yeah, that would be ideal if we could make that money work for that.
Anything else for us today, John?
I'm good, if you're good.
Yep, I think so. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, so now we have gone through everybody's expenditure budget. Um, I don't know if you guys have had any time to think about any areas that you maybe wanna revisit or I've sent, I've given you that sheet that shows the summary of fund differences. So you can see where we've made the changes, um where we're sitting as far as budgets. If you look overall, um most of them are going down with the exception of IT and HR, which we know what those are. Um, and State's Attorney, which we know what his, what he's got going on. Um, is there anything that you want to look at closer? You want me to dig into a little bit more? I did get um other economic development from uh Children's Inn, I think it was, and they are requesting twelve thousand. So as far as how we wanna divvy out that money, if you'll, on this summary of fund changes, you'll see that I um under other economic development increased by fifty-eight point two eight percent. The reason that is, is because we put the Forward Sioux Falls, um, the Compass, the Cotabilities and Lifescapes. I put those all under there because they basically are their economic assistance for those places. So that's why we've got such a large increase on that one.
Where's this at, Sherry?
Yeah, which one is that?
The other economic development is under the general fund, but if you look at this sheet here, um, it's probably clearer or a little cleaner. The economic, other economic fund went from thirty-four thousand to eighty-one thousand, five hundred. And that's because we talked about moving forward Sioux Falls from the commissioner's budget to this, and then I've also moved to Cotabilities, which was under mental illness. And, did you find it? And then I've got Lifescapes moved under there because that was also under mental illness and I don't, I think that was, I think it's better served under other economic development.
Now, how much is this Forward Sioux Falls?
I think we said that there's gonna be a four thousand dollar contribution over the next five years?
Seven years, probably.
Four thousand over seven years?
Yep. And that's, I think, actually less than what we gave them last year.
And isn't this the one where Minnehaha County gives them two thousand a year?
So it's twenty-eight thousand then, over seven years?
Yes.
So we're giving them more than what they asked for?
No.
How much did they ask for?
They haven't, they did submit anything yet, right, Jim?
They're gonna come out with twenty-five thousand dollars, which was uh less than what we've given in the past. I think we've given as much as fifty thousand dollars. And I don't know Commissioner Aaron's, um, I think Minnehaha County is up their ante. I don't know. I have no knowledge of that.
Yeah, they're doing two thousand as a, on the twenty twenty request, they did two thousand.
Yeah, they did two thousand. I, we've never given them fifty thousand.
Yes, yeah, we did the first year. We, when they first came out, we gave them fifty thousand dollars the first year. That's several years ago. That's probably could be fourteen years ago when they first come out. But we've whittled that down, I think, every year that's gone down considerably.
Do they do any projects here in Lincoln County?
Jim?
Cause their website says they're not doing any, any projects cited in Lincoln County.
Well, Commissioner, I'll ha- I'll have, I'll have probably the chair from uh Dave Rosenboom come down from the bank and give you the um spiel from Forward Sioux Falls. It's not necessarily what they do right for Lincoln County, but when you add the number of jobs that have been created overall in our area, most of the people that leave from Harrisburg or T or Lennox go to Sioux Falls because of the growth up there. So we may not have a specific project that is built in Lincoln County, but yet the residents do benefit by higher wages and job opportunities that may not have existed without the economic development program. And this one, Forward Sioux Falls, is recognized nationally as one of the most successful programs uh in the country, and I don't know how many have copied that uh throughout South Dakota and throughout the region. So I don't know that we can look at specifically saying, are they south of Fifty-Seventh Street? It's an area development that not only Lincoln County has benefited from, but Turner and Moody and and Union and anybody that works up in the Sioux Falls area.
Now, we belong to the Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce too, don't we? Cause I noticed on the Forward Sioux Falls website that Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce is a donor to Forward Sioux Falls. So I'm kind of wondering why we belong to all these organizations and then they give money to each other. Shouldn't we just belong to one organization up there instead of belonging to multiple ones?
Well, Commissioner, I, I don't mean to take exception, but the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce is one that um many people or organizations, over two thousand, belong to. And I don't know that they look at it from that particular standpoint. The Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce receives money from the uh, from Forward Sioux Falls for various projects. For the lobbying, for example, that Sioux Falls does for the business community in our entire area is paid for by Forward Sioux Falls. So, and our dues to the chamber are, I don't know, are
Four hundred a year.
Four hundred dollars a year, which is not um owner, onerous to belong to a organization that really is a benefit for all of us. So uh, I, I don't know, we could belong to the Chamber of Commerce from Harrisburg or Chamber of Commerce from T or Lennox or anybody. But I think that's the county's position to promote these kinds of things. So I don't know that they give money back and forth. Um, like I tried to explain to you, Sioux Falls uh Chamber of Commerce is a dues organization. It runs on its membership's dues, but any of its other programs need the financial assistance and that's the purpose of Forward Sioux Falls to try to contribute to that.
I'm just worried four thousand seems pretty expensive. We just raised taxes on people and I think for twenty-eight thousand dollars of taxpayer money to this organization just seems a little too steep for me.
Would you entertain the fact if I brought the chairman of the Forward Sioux Falls down and explained the program to it? They've had wonderful success this year from businesses throughout the, throughout the area. But to accommodate, just for the purpose of showing what they have done, I would like to have Dave Rosenboom come down and uh give you a brief synopsis of that, if that would be okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always open to hearing from these folks and I'm sure he's gonna talk about all the great things they're doing and all facts, figures and statistics. One thing I'm worried about though is uh since, you know, we're not a business, we're government. And so you can't look at giving money to these organizations like the Chamber of Commerce and to Forward Sioux Falls the same way you would as if you were Raven or Citibank. And one of the things I am concerned about is if we're gonna give this much money to Forward Sioux Falls, we need to see them investing in projects that are physically cited in Lincoln County. Cause right now they're not doing anything that's physically cited. Now, I understand the mobility of workers, people from Lincoln County benefit from jobs in Minnehaha County. I understand that argument and that's all good and well. But if we're gonna give twenty-eight thousand dollars to these people, they owe it to us at least to consider uh a, some kind of effort in Lincoln County that adds to our property tax base. And, cause that's all we have. If we had sales tax revenue and things like that, um, it'd be a lot easier to stomach some of these things. But we only have property taxes. And I understand the argument where people live and work at a job in Minnehaha County and then they own a house in Lincoln County. I get that part. But we are a unit of government giving taxpayer money away and we just raise taxes. So we've gotta be a little more, just because they asked for twenty-five thousand, there's no metric that tells me that we should just give them what they asked you for. And we ought to dial that down. I am not opposed to being a member in Forward Sioux Falls, but just because they asked for it doesn't mean we should just bend over and give it to them. We ought to dial that back and be a little more, you know, stingier with the taxpayer money, cause uh, so what if they asked for twenty-five? You need to go back and tell them, nope, we'll give you just as much as what Minnehaha County gave you or we'll give you a little less, prorated on the fact that they're not actually supporting any projects that are physically cited in Lincoln County. Although there is economic mobility, so maybe we'll give you fifteen hundred a year, not four thousand.
Well, I just to make sure that you understand, Forward Sioux Falls is an organization made up of the Development Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce. Those are the two entities that it's strictly an economic development uh tool that provides economic assistance to various things. So as far as them trying to put something in, they're not the Development Office. They're not the, the new Lakita, Makita, whatever that uh determined, that new organization or revamped organization is all about. They don't have that. Theirs is just to collect dollars and cents to promote economic development for the region, wherever that may be. But I will get a hold of, um, I'm not in favor of the fifteen hundred, Commissioner. I will say that on the record. I believe that we benefit tremendously and we have tremendous, our whole growth uh from the whole area is not due to what we have done. It's done to the growth of Sioux Falls and this entire region. But I will make provisions for the president to come down and at least address this body and inform them from their vantage point why they're deserving of some financial assistance.
Yeah, I don't even think they come down every year to give us a report or anything, do they? Even though we give them all this money every year. And uh, I looked at their most recent nonprofit tax filing. They got lots of money in the bank too. They got millions of dollars. So I just think you, you're, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. You want to give them four thousand and you know, you're friends with all those people up there, but sometimes you just gotta tell your friends that taxpayer money doesn't come easy and can't just always give people what they're asking for.
I'm not set on four thousand dollars. I'm, I'm fluid on that. I would even look at what uh Minnehaha County would give them if that would match. I mean, I can, I'm, I'm not setting stone on any of that. But I would like to make sure that we understand what Forward Sioux Falls is before we kick them to the curb and just let them under, help, help everybody understand the value that they have made throughout the past, I don't know, my God, I think they've been around for about twenty years and how much growth has been accomplished by that.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna move along.
Okay, so um Julia is here then to talk about the wages and the new hire request forms. So we'll go through that.
Okay, sounds good. Are we looking at any particular page in our books or do we have something separate to look at?
No, the, the wages are on a completely separate spreadsheet, but they are in the total budget. If you look at your budget forms by the, up in the top corner, it says two point oh, two point five, whatever. In those, in those numbers, I do not have the new hire requests in there um because they're not there yet.
So are these budget worksheets that are in here? We're not looking at those? No, okay.
Nope, nope.
So not looking at these?
Yeah, I would just.
Put that to the side.
Yep, just look at her.
Okay.
Look at your book.
Nothing to look at, okay. All right, so we have that clear.
Jake, could you please um change the screen for me, please? Thank you very much. Okay, so before you, you'll find all new position requests. And then this is um an overview of the cost of each position um totaling three hundred, roughly three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for these four positions. Um, this is just a brief overview of the cost analysis in regards to the four positions. The requests themselves are in your booklets, is my understanding right, Sherry?
Yes.
Um, and the thought process. And the thought process of why the position is needed, and that information was given by each department head. So, you can get the reasoning behind the positions in the book. This is more so just in a totality, global view of what's being requested. Questions on that?
The State's Attorney's position there, is that the one that we just created?
Nope.
Or is that a new one in addition to that?
That would be in addition to.
And then the Planner position, I take Planner, that means planning and zoning?
Yep, you're exactly right.
And that's why the forty percent increase approximately?
No. Nope, the forty percent increase is only for their expenditures. But if you look at the front of your book, there's a new position request form, no, a little further, under all this information.
They're right after the wage worksheets, toward the front.
So, that's, I think you got one more back. Thank you, Jim?
Thank you.
They're right after the ones.
Okay, thank you.
So, I like, there was something to look at.
So, the Planner is actually for flood, flood plane?
Yeah, that's my understanding. So, we're currently recruiting for a Planner position, but this would be in addition to that position.
So, this is John requesting this, or is it Toby? It looks like it's kind of a combination.
They work very closely together, those two departments, so I think it's a little bit of both. But it's my understanding that it's coming out of planning and zoning, is that right? No?
I don't, I think it come out of flood plan.
Okay, I'm wrong.
It says flood plane management. I know we hear a lot about, you know, the Sheriff's Office and the State's Attorney's Office, and we have a pretty good grip on why they're needing additional personnel. And I, but I don't recall if John talked about this additional position when he presented.
He briefly touched on it, he said something about.
If you want, we can have him come down.
I just don't recall all of it.
He was talking about, something about data entry, and it takes so long to keep the GIS system updated, and didn't feel he had enough bandwidth to do the other flood plane duties. I don't think he flew, I don't think he was making a pitch at that time for the position. He was just kind of introducing us to it. That's all that I recall him saying.
I would, I question the need on some of these things on the flood plane and all of the other issues that seem to be cropping up. And every time I think we, I see a map, the flood plane has increased. There's more blue lines through it. And I just wondered how that can, how that can continually change, or if that's just an arbitrary figure that the government put out, or USDA put out.
So, the, this would be more like a data entry type of position, or do you know?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that this person would oversee the flood plane management so that John can go back to the GIS side of things. Anything more specific than that would be a John and Toby question, I can't speak to that.
Well, you know, when you, when you evaluate the need for a new employee, you kind of ask yourself, is there things being dropped to the wayside that are critical to the operation of our business, our entity, right? I mean, what are the, are balls getting dropped? And I, it's not a fair question, it's not a fair question for you, I'm just thinking out loud, that's all.
That's fair.
But I didn't, did these people flush these jobs out with you, though?
There was some conversation, it's more so, I'm going to, well, are we speaking about Planner, all of them?
Christmas wishlist type stuff here?
Some of the positions, yes, some of the positions, no.
That's where, when people come in, I want, well, I want a lot of things, too. But I, when they don't preface it with "I need" and explain why, I guess that's where I'm having a hard time.
Most of the time, when a department head, I'm just speaking in generalities, has a request for new position, yeah, they'll let me know ahead of time, and I'll ask them questions. Here are some things to think about when making these requests. And typically, it's data-driven, like, how can you prove that you need this person, right? You got to sell the need for the position. And so, I encourage them to do those things, and then it's up to them to do that. So, what they've done after that, sometimes I see, sometimes I don't.
All right, I'm just wondering what isn't, like, Commissioner, and so, what's not getting done that needs to be getting done? And if, if everything's getting done, well, we don't need a new person.
Okay, he's coming down?
I've got Colin to him.
Okay.
And I don't want, I'm not picking on him, it's just generally speaking.
Any other questions regarding the figures or the numbers, while we wait for John to come down?
You've got, so like Deputy State's Attorney, that increased amount on the furniture equipment, I'm assuming that's because they've got to create a space?
Yeah, I think it's the desk and what have you.
Okay.
And that was fairly conservative after talking to Jessica, who put the numbers together.
Sure.
For the Deputy Sheriff, we put a hiring bonus in there, knowing that we'll try to get someone who's certified, of course, but knowing that we might not get somebody who's certified. So, just a little bit of a cushion. But in most cases, we've been fairly successful, like the Sheriff indicated earlier, that we've been able to find some quality certified applicants.
Sure.
Yeah, and just out of curiosity, and I'm not nitpicking here, but I remember what Sheriff Swenson was saying. He was talking about it costs six thousand dollars to outfit a deputy. And, you know, and there's a lot of equipment, bulletproof vest, and all kinds of, you know, gear and stuff like that. Shouldn't we be putting that under Furniture Equipment Conference at the, at the six thousand dollar amount? So, we get a better picture of what it looks like to hire these people? Or am I missing something there that? Does that, does that like come out of a different part of the budget?
Well, I believe some of their, like, their bulletproof vests are reimbursed through grants.
Okay.
So.
But he, I, I just recall him saying that a few minutes ago, talking about six thousand dollars. And, I mean, that sounds, I mean, I understand where that's coming from, there's a lot of gear.
Yeah, I would agree that.
You know, gives us a better, more accurate picture of what it costs to hire folks.
But I'm wondering with, with Steve's positions, he's got fifteen hundred dollars under furniture and equipment. They're not at a desk, so.
I agree.
I'm thinking that that's probably a portion of what the non-grant stuff would be.
Sure. Yeah, and these, these are line items just for expenditures, not receipts, right?
Was John going to come down, or?
John's offered family medical emergency as well.
Okay.
You want to speak to that position?
I have to wait until he's here, too, I can answer some questions.
I, if, if it's a position for his department, then I think he needs to be here.
Yeah, it's specifically, it's, it's a. It's, it's a request from the flood plane budget. So, there's a separate budget that John administers for the flood plane budget. For the life of it, it's never had a full-time staff person with it, John's just assumed those roles. And so, really, when we looked at the duties and things like that, we assigned it as a Planner position, which is kind of a misnomer, because it'd be specifically kind of a flood plane technician, flood plane administrator for that position.
Why don't, why don't we get that fixed? Because we'll, you know, if we do give a person, and it's at fifty-three thousand dollars today, and then we come in and say, oh, well, their job duties are this, and it's actually seventy thousand. Let's, apples to apples, what is it going to be? I mean, I think that's what needs to be discussed. So, I'd like to see that changed.
Toby, has that really grown that much?
Oh, yes, yeah. And then you look at two, is, you know, this really person would become a water planner, because we, we've adopted the new master drainage plan, which we're going now into the development of permitting process. And I've said this before at the previous meetings, is that our building permits are skyrocketing, but you add probably every single one of those, going to have to have a drainage permit associated as well, too. We're thin, we upstairs, we need staff that can specifically with this thing. And the other issues, too, is, so implement that part of it, the flood plane issue, where, you know, the feds are updating, modernizing the flood plane map. Right through the next few years, we'll be adopting that. We've shown you that, that it's going to have some significant changes throughout the county as far as development and areas of development. The second part of that is just the increasing demand that you've seen for, for property owners that they want, fixes to some of their existing problems out there. We need a staff person that can coordinate some of those things, apply for grants, you know, facilitate, you know, getting some of those projects done, and some of those fixes done. As well as, you know, the administration part of it, the next part of it is just the public outreach. You know, we need to get out to the public and explain some of these projects that we're going through. You know, last night was a planning commission meeting, every single application, the question came up about drainage, about flooding, and things like that. We need to do a better job of really communicating the public of what proposed development isn't necessarily negative towards flood, you know, flood prevention, flood drainage. Which is part of it, and we're, and we're working on it to manage it, so.
How much of this, Toby, will be affected by the drain tile? You know, everybody's putting drain tile in these days. You know, it's a dry year now, but I mean, we've had wet years.
Will this be impacted by, is this position going to address some of that?
Permitting of it, yes, yep. If that's what the board wishes to permit it. But, you know, this person's going to get ground running to, to help with assisting with developing what that ordinance is. Which, again, the county does not have a drainage ordinance now. All the concerns we hear from the public, you need to prevent this, you need to do this. We also need to look at from the aspect that we can't require landowners or developers to do something that we don't have an ordinance for, we can't make it up. So, as part of this is what we came out of the master drainage plan, is we have to adopt drainage regulations, drainage standards. Well, that's going to require some additional permitting, additional regulations, additional communication, additional review, and things like that. It's, it's a lot of intensive type things that we're going, and we have a lot more development. You know, I presented to Judge Rasmussen a couple of weeks ago, some development statistics. And when you look at what we've had just this year, we've rezoned three hundred acres of land, just in the unincorporate area. The cities have annexed almost nine hundred acres of land into the cities for development. So, everyone gets excited about building permits, you know, but to us, in the planning and zoning, that's just current statistics. That's just what we're doing now. What we look at for trends is what we've got coming up. And you go back to, over the last decade, we've converted four thousand acres from agricultural to development land. Just this year, halfway through, we've already done a thousand, let alone, we're probably on pace with applications to get up to two thousand. So, you look at that, in just one year, we'd be at half of what we've done in a decade of land conversion. It's, there's a lot of development going on, and we need to make sure that we keep ahead of it with the drainage part of it. And so, this is a way to look at this position, to say, this is a person's going to coordinate that for the county, for departments.
So, really, Toby, and I know John's not here, but what we're really looking at is not just a flood plane administrator. What we're really looking at here is someone who is kind of wearing a dual hat, doing some flood plane administration, but also a regulator, regulating drainage issues related to growth and development.
Yeah, I'd say a water planner, just say a water planner, yep.
And it, do you think it's time that we start looking into assessing an impact fee on developers, like City of Sioux Falls does?
It certainly appears that way.
And that would help pay for the regulation of the growth that we're, you know, benefiting from and going through.
Yeah, the impacts of the roads. You know, the city of Sioux Falls, I've mentioned this to some of you, is that the Kathy Kruger property, which is a minimal development for us, it's, you know, maybe seventy, nine lots, but they assessed her sixty thousand dollars in just development impact fees, you know? And we're the ones that are going to be, you know, you know, dealing with the roads, and dealing with the drains, and dealing with the septic systems. So, either we, either we do impact fees to address the transportation, to address the drainage, and address some of those things, or we make the developers pay a bigger role upfront in doing that, such as collection systems. You know, the, the one that I had this morning, I mean, you're talking about another twenty-nine lots into an area that already has more houses than Worthing, and Hudson, and Fairview combined. I mean, at some point in time, we need to say that we need to look at this as municipality, urban-type development. So, yes, I think some of those things need to take place. And part of that is really, that position will allow us to take a greater look at specializing in kind of drainage issues and drainage impacts.
Well, the Kathy Kruger development is, first of all, it's beautiful out there. And she's a very fortunate person, and that development that she did out there is very nice, she did a good job. And if you go out there and you look at that development, and I've had five people take me out there now, because that's Spring Creek. All of that is beautiful property that is highly marketable, that there is a huge marketplace for that kind of upscale, one to three acre lots. And they all sit on, on top of the bluff, and they all drain into Spring Creek. And Spring Creek, there's a lot of people who already live along Spring Creek, who don't like the idea of Spring Creek bringing more water into their backyard. And that's kind of what's going on with the, the long development issue there, too, drainage pipes from, from all that. But there is huge market potential there. And it doesn't seem like we have a handle on the growth and development piece as far as it relates to drainage, so.
Thank you, Toby.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
We're going to move on to wages, what are we, where are we doing?
Elected official wages, we haven't discussed yet. So, I have gathered the comparable entities, their current wages are for 2021 to determine market for the 2022 wages. I'll just briefly go through these and talk about a possible strategy for you to consider after we evaluate the numbers. But states, the position of State's Attorney looks like it's slightly over-market by point nine nine percent. The position of Sheriff looks like it's under-market by three point five six percent. The position of Auditor looks like it's under-market by eighteen point four seven percent. Treasurer, it looks like it's under-market by fifteen point seven eight percent, sorry, here we go. Register of Deeds looks like it's under-market by fourteen point two three percent. And then Commission, I'm going to pause here and go into a little bit of detail, so, just so everybody's on the same page. So, the initial glance at this, it looks like the Commission wages are over-market by ten point two nine percent. However, there's a significant outlier for Carver County at seventy-two thousand, that's due to the fact that those commissioners are full-time. So, if you remove that outlier, then it looks like the Commission wage is under-market by eight point two three percent. So, last year, as it pertains to the Auditor and Treasurer's position, the Commission was supportive of, of bringing them to market in a two-year time span. Is that still how you'd like to move forward with that approach, for those two positions?
Well, I think that's what was discussed, and that's what we had agreed on at the time. I don't, I don't know if people's thoughts on that have changed, but we didn't do it all at once.
Yep. Sound fair, if we just move forward with that approach?
Well, that's, I think that's what we had already agreed to do, so.
And then Register of Deeds, as you know, there's a new position, or new incumbent in that position. If you wanted to take a similar. Um, if you wanted to take a similar approach, um, then we would just split up that fourteen point two three percent to bring them to market over a two-year timeframe. If you wanna use the same approach in which you did with the auditor and treasurer.
What are the thoughts of the board on that?
These are government jobs and I don't care whether you're brand new or you were hired as the deputy. Or you were, came from private industry and you made half a million dollars, you ought to be paid a fair wage in these positions. And um, you know, if, if you run for office and you, it's just like the state level positions, right? Doesn't matter who you are, you walk off the street, you win the job, that's what you get paid. And it seems like in the past, there was this presumption that did, when new people came into the jobs, where they paid less than. And I mean significantly less than what the prior position was that held it. I don't understand why there was, i- it's like there was uh means testing going on, like, oh, this person won. Or a new person got into the job, we're gonna pay them less. I, I just don't think that's the way that government ought to work. Cause it leads to some, it leads to cronyism. I'm not saying that's what happened, but I'm saying it leads to cronyism or allegations of it. Because, well, we don't like the person who won the job, so we're gonna pay them less because they quote-quote have less experience. Doesn't matter. The voters voted them in. They won the job fair and square. So I don't think we should approach these positions from the perspective of, well, so-and-so just got elected. We ought to look at market-based, you know, that's one indicator that we should use is what the market says these positions get paid.
Well, and I, I agree with that because we have a commissioner, wait, we don't, if somebody gets elected commissioner, we don't say, oh, well, you're only getting this much. Because you're new. We don't do that for those positions. So I kinda don't understand why we do it for other positions if we're gonna follow the same.
If I remember correctly, I think the thought process was because there was such a discrepancy from where the person was placed initially to where market was. I think the commission was saying, well, let's give it two years just because of the financial impact. And I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying. I think that was just the thought process of how, how to go about it.
No, I agree. That's with regard to the auditor's, the, see, we had, we had this discussion a year ago.
Yeah, cause there's.
The auditor's position was getting paid less. And for some reason, when the deputy came in and got appointed by the commission, she was paid less than what the previous auditor was. Well, you know, I guess that's just where I philosophically disagree. I mean, it's a governmental position and ought to have one kind of pay rate, just like governor does. Just like attorney general, um, just like all the other positions in state government do the same thing. They don't, the legislature doesn't say, well, you're the new guy. So you're gonna get paid less. And I don't know why this commission did that in the past, but I don't know why it did a lot of things. But that's where I stand on it.
So for register of deeds, how would you like to proceed?
What was the register of deeds making?
Um, she's, that position is at sixty-five percent and it's under market by fourteen point two three percent. Um, if you used a similar approach to what you did with the auditor and treasurer, then you would just split it up over two years. However, based on Joel's comments or Commissioner Aaron's, excuse me, if you wanna bring them up next year to market, that's up to you, I guess.
Well, if we're gonna do uh the auditor on a two-year period, it seems to me we should be consistent for all of them in that same process.
When do you break that cycle though?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we, we'd break it by doing that, which maybe is a good thing.
Well, yeah, cause I mean, if you're, you're basing it on, and I'm, I'm not advocating for myself.
No, I understand. It goes up every year.
When you're, when you're, you've got a resolution that says auditor, treasurer and registered deeds starts at sixty-five thousand. It doesn't matter when they start, but the state's attorney and the sheriff, they've got statute amounts that they start at. So they have to start at that, but.
They don't have to start at that. That's just a statutory minimum.
Well, yeah, I mean, the minimum, yeah. But it's, so if you don't have Becky go up to market now.
She may never.
How do you, how do you break the cycle for?
For anybody else.
For the reg- the next auditor, the next treasurer, I mean.
Commissioner Aaron's, are you, are you, when I, I don't wanna disagree with you on, on the salary thing. But would you think that we should just bite the bullet and move them uh one fell swoop?
You know, I can't resist, but we're gonna use our Forward Sioux Falls money to invest in our people.
You and my Forward Sioux Falls.
Alright, you guys.
That two thousand dollars a year is really gonna make an impact.
Well, you stepped in that one.
But otherwise, we're gonna have people that get a, what, a fourteen percent pay increase?
That's where they're supposed to be. That's where they're supposed to be.
I don't know about that.
Well, I'm, here's the problem, and obviously I am not the one to, I am a budget hawk and don't advocate for giving away people's money. The problem that we've been in, I think, and I said this last year too, so I'm on the record. I do not like the idea of this means testing, or every time somebody new comes into office, we drop their pay down. And we use this ra- rationale that somehow, well, they're new. These are government positions and they ought to have a standard, just like state government actually has a state statute that says. That all these statewide elected positions, whether you're a state rep or senator, or you're the secretary of state, or you're the governor. It all says you make a standard amount of money and that's what keeps everybody fair and honest and accountable. And it doesn't say, well, if a Democrat gets elected, we're gonna pay them half. Well, that's not how government is supposed to work. And we need to do the same thing here at the county level. We've, you know, I mean, yeah, I would prefer a statutory or an ordinance that would set this. We just, every, every budget cycle, we come in and we're like, oh, that sounds good, let's do it. It's almost willy-nilly is really what it is. We ought to have an ordinance here at the county level, given the fact that we're so big now, that we set these positions at. And then everybody knows what they're gonna be and then we, as part of that ordinance, you have a cost of living increase or something on top of that. This whole system that we're involved in right now just leads to allegations of cronyism, like, well, you know, we're, I gotta pay these people as much. I don't like that. We've gotta figure out what that set amount is. I've told you in the past, Julia, obviously, I'm not a fan of the, the survey. Um, but I am a fan of getting these people up to market, but it's like we're in a market arms race over salaries, isn't it?
Always. I mean, it's just kind of the game. It's the nature of the beast.
Yeah, we're in an arms race, but the problem is I don't look at elected officials, people who run for office, the same way as we look at the rest of our workforce. You know, there's kind of, the public has a different standard for elected officials, right? And that's why I kinda like the idea of using this survey, although I'm not a big fan of it. Figure out how much we ought to be paying, but not fully. Because these are elected positions where I kinda go back to the model of talking about, you know, governor, secretary of state and all that. Where we set that amount in ordinance or statute. So that's kinda where I'm at. I, I think it's pretty clear where I'm at. We need to get these people up to a certain position and uh be done with it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Didn't, didn't some of this come about because last year, these people were not elected, they were appointed, right? Didn't we have resignations and then we hired? Think, I, I think what Commissioner Aaron's is saying is correct, they're, if they're elected. But last year when these salaries were set, it was for some individuals who were appointed. I think there's a big difference, but uh nonetheless, uh, that's my take on it right now. And I think a, a fourteen percent pay increase is too much in our budget.
And I guess from my point of view, I mean, I'm, okay, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Aaron's on this point. And yes, there is a difference, but they are doing the same job, whether they were appointed or elected and um going into things. Whoever runs or doesn't run, they need to know what that position's gonna be and um, you know. So I'm with Commissioner Aaron's on this one. I think we need to bite the bullet, get everybody where they need to be. And we always look at the cost of living adjustments and um step increases for other employees. So I, I think that's what we need to do for elected officials as well.
Julia, if we, if we brought all these people up to where they're going to be, what, what is the total amount on that? Do you have that figure?
Um, I don't. Sherry, would you?
Do you know what the dollar amounts of increases are?
You want just rough math?
Um, whatever number you want me to put in there.
Um, five thousand.
And could you spell out which one would get what?
Yeah, and I just wanna be clear. All my comments are revolving around this auditor and register of deeds thing, okay? That, in the context of them being in this two-year cycle. Cause if we're gonna use the market-based approach, that means that if somebody is over market, does that mean we're giving them a pay cut? Well, of course not. And we had that same discussion last year. Are we giving pay cuts when people are over market? So we, and I understand each commissioner can vote how they want, but I'm just saying, you can't, if you are going to be a huge proponent of the market-based approach, that's, that cuts both ways. And um, I don't think people are always willing to make it cut both ways. So that's why I'm kind of this fan of setting a standard amount. And yes, in this instance, it means the register of deeds and auditor are going to become quote-unquote winners. They're going to financially benefit from the increase, but that's just because we didn't have the position high enough in the first place where it was supposed to be. They may become losers to, four years from now, if it becomes quote-unquote over market, right? So we, you know, we just, we gotta get these positions up to where they need to be. We should set them in statute and then go.
What, what is the total?
I know I'm beating the horse.
Okay, so for auditor.
I'd like to know the totals.
Um, auditor, say thirteen thousand, sheriff, five thousand. Treasurer, eleven thousand. Register of deeds, if brought to market this year, will be nine thousand.
So we're looking at about thirty-eight thousand.
A register of deeds at nine. What were the other ones you had, Julia?
Okay.
It was a total of about thirty-eight thousand.
So I've got thirteen thousand for auditor, treasurer eleven thousand, registered deeds nine thousand, and sheriff five thousand. If we.
And then, yeah.
Alright, so two point, oh, if we do the. We will have a total.
So she does that, Julia. Do other counties, if you know. Our other counties uh here in South Dakota, up and down the I twenty-nine corridor specifically. Minnehaha, Union, Turner. How do they assess what their folks are gonna be paid? Do they?
Very similar.
Okay, so they put this list together, they have their auditor come in or their HR person and they say, here's what these ten counties are making, here's what the market is.
So let's take a step back, that every organization, typically government, has their own comparables. So that's gonna vary a little bit. So they gather that data and do, use a similar approach. So the market-based approach is very commonly utilized in governmental entities for elected officials. So it's funny because we all start emailing each other about the same time, like, hey, what'd you make in twenty twenty-one? What did you make? What are you looking for an increase? So we're all waiting for each other to make a decision because that's gonna impact how we each will move forward next year. So this approach is really, really common. Um, there may be a little bit of variation, just depending on internal equity, um, based on other department heads within the organization. But to your point, this is really a common approach.
Okay.
Okay, so if you're looking at the rate sheets that you have in there, um, because we've got the three different scenarios. If we do a two-point or two percent raise for everybody with those numbers that we just talked about for the elected officials. This would include the two percent raise for the commissioners because you guys need them also. Um, the total would go up to eleven million, seven forty-eight, oh forty-nine, forty-eight. And that was from eleven, five ninety-seven, four seventy-eight, twenty-six. That's for two percent. Two point five, it would have been eleven, seven forty-three, seven sixty-four. And this is eleven, seven eighty-four, zero one eight, three point two five. And again, commissioners and state's attorney, I'm doing their raise based on what the COLA increase that you're giving for everybody else. Um, eleven, eight three seven, nine seventy-three compared to eleven, eight three five, one ninety-three.
Yeah, and, and there was, I'll just tell you, in the interest of full disclosure, I'm not gonna support a increase for commissioners. We just did an opt-out, so I'm not gonna be supportive of uh giving, giving ourselves more money. When we just took money out of people's pockets to pay for roads and bridges.
But you guys have also cut things such as your meals and travel and everything else. So I mean, and it does cost you guys to come down here, so. But I, I absolutely understand what you're saying.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you wanna bring everyone to market? Is that what I'm hearing? For the initial budget purposes, so Sherry can start with the numbers for you all?
I think that's a good way to start, yes.
Okay. And then in the past, for elected officials that are slightly over market, we've done the cost of living increase that are given to other staff. Is that how you'd like to move forward with this position?
I'm on the fence on that one, if they're over market. Other commissioners, what are your thoughts?
To bring every, to bring those uh four positions is a total of thirty-eight thousand dollars, is that right?
Close to that, yes, yeah.
I might have missed one, but.
And then when that's up to adjustment, right, then we figure out whether it's a two, two point five, or three point two five, right, for overall.
Well, if we're bringing them to market, wouldn't that include, I mean, would, isn't?
Yeah, that's just, that's all encompassing, so it would just be this number, bring them to market.
There wouldn't be an additional COLA increase.
So that's just.
That is market.
That's mar- market's market, right? Okay.
Thoughts on how to do the initial budgets for this position? Right now, it's inputted into the budget just for something to put in there. It's my understanding that it's just the COLA, again, given for what it's worth.
Well, you can on one hand use, logically speaking, and I know there's not a lot of logic that goes on with this frankly. But if they're over market, they're, the axe is coming.
So why wouldn't we set it as a new person coming in, auditor, any elected official coming in, you have the base. And then to make it simple, if you're giving the courthouse, I'm gonna use three point two five, cause I'm really going for that one. But if you're giving everybody in the courthouse a three point two five, then you just increase the elected officials by that, so they don't have to, you know, sit there and wonder every year. Oh, God, what are they gonna do it? Are you gonna potentially lose money?
Right, cause then you're gonna get lopsided the other way at some point.
Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't you just, the new people coming in, get them to market. And then as your elected position continues, whatever the cost of living increase is for the courthouse, that's what the elected position would be. It would be simpler because you are gonna flip-flop every year as you get new people in and out. But then now you're saying, just for instance, with the state's attorney, if you're saying to go by market and you're saying to potentially cut his wage. And I know that we're really not saying that, um, then he's got how many years of experience? And you're, and I know that it's not the market thing, but to start him at a market and then go up, I think is the best way to do it. This market evaluation every year, I think is unfair.
It, what if some young? It, what if some young kid out of law school, one year of experience, ran for state's attorney? Well, the job pays what the job pays. I don't care whether you're Frank Barrar, or Harvey Woolman, or Bill Janklow. When they all ran for governor, the, the pay, the pay was what the pay was. It shouldn't matter whether you got one year of experience, or if you're Johnny Cochran.
Well, when you're coming in as an elected position, you're taking the weight of that elected position on your shoulders. They're not saying, oh, you've only been there, you're, you're not gonna be as liable as anybody else.
Yeah, and, and so that's the pro, you know, that is the downfall of the logic of using the market-based approach for these positions. And it's kind of the folly of it. And also, yeah, I mean, I agree with you Sheri about, we're, we're not cu- I don't like the idea of cutting elected officials' pay in the middle of their term. I mean, jeez, we, we have like constitutional protections for judges that say you can't cut their pay. And it just, it, it reeks of bad government when, when you're doing this. That's why I'm not a big fan of the market-based approach, but you know, we need to use some kind of tool to determine what we're gonna pay our elected officials. But uh, you know, it's just, every year we come in and monkey with this and tinker with it, and it's just like, well, so-and-so's doing a good job, let's just give them a raise. It doesn't matter whether you're doing a good jo- yeah, it doesn't matter whether you're doing a good job or not in a government position, you're an elected official.
Well, to, to that very point, Commissioner, so that's why these are handled, the elected officials are handled differently than you do with your general staff. Because regardless on your performance of an elected official, and we're super lucky that we all have great elected officials, right? You can be a poor performer and you're gonna just get what market is. So you're not gonna get that step increase because that's not the com- philosophy that's followed. So it's, it's, it's two different approaches, but rightfully so, because these individuals are elected, as opposed to these have to live up to a standard and a performance evaluation. These people, their performance is based on if they're voted in or not. So this is good conversation, but there's a reason for the two different philosophies for the two different groups of individuals. But I can appreciate where you're coming from and it makes sense. But there needs to be, to your point, there needs to be some sort of ground base of where to start. And if you don't look at your competitors, how are you able to stay competitive within the market and get quality applicants and elected officials?
Well, that's for the people to decide.
That's fair.
I mean, I'm on board with giving the cost of a living adjustment um to those that aren't just, that we're not at market or bringing up to market that we talked about earlier. What um, you said you had a sales pitch for us on what percent, so maybe we should have that discussion though?
What percent?
Of the cost of living adjustment. I thought the national increase in cost of living was like two-point-nine-six, am I wrong?
Um, so, good memory. And I actually pulled that data again for this conversation. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna insert myself.
No, because I have no idea.
Sorry about that. So CPI at the end of March was two-point-nine-six. As a general reminder, CPI is the cost of goods services as it pertains to this conversation with, with wages. So cost of goods and services, just straight out the gate, has increased as of last year at this time by two-point-nine-six percent. I pulled the data at the end of last month, that number has now increased to over five percent. So just life, these are my words, just life has increased over five percent as it has last year, the cost of goods and services.
No, I think you're right, Julia. I mean, you know, you just, you read the Wall Street Journal or CNBC or whatever, there is inflation in this country, it's real. It's Jerome Powell, the chairman of the Fed, just testified in front of Congress, he's, inflation is happening. Cost of goods and services is rising. La- you've got this two-nine-point-six, and then a month later, it's five percent. I get that. It's more expensive to live in America today. And the primary driver of that, of course, is there's a lot of money being inserted into the economy by the federal government right now. And that's being spent and people are raising their prices. And that's why we're in a economic arms war with other, with other counties over what to pay our officials. And I think it's somewhat of an aberration right now though, because I think once the federal government's spending abates, hopefully we'll see a low, see inflation go down. But what these folks are saying at the national level is uh, you know, the chair of the Fed, he testified that he sees it going on for a whole nother year yet. And there's, there's, we're, we're in a highly dynamic economy right now. But going back to our elected officials' conversation and uh, cost of living there, um, I'm curious, what did the state of South Dakota decide for this year?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. And then I'm kind of curious what the counties around us decided and I'm.
For the cost of living?
Yeah, for the cost of living increases.
They're, they're all, again, having these conversations right now, so nobody has determined that. But typically, when setting the cost of living increases, you use last year's approach, last year's information to set this year's wages.
Yeah, we're not gonna use five percent just because it came out last month, right?
No, um, to your, to your point, that was just conversation, that's one of the factors to look at when determining a cost of living increase. And I'm happy to talk about the other factors and revisit that if you want to today, or if you have something in mind, and feel free to do that too.
Well, I'm kind of, kind of just curious what the other entity, you know, if you're taking a market-based approach and you're looking at what they've done with salaries, I'd be very curious seeing the same chart and graph with what they did for, you know, cost of living. You know, curious what the state of South Dakota did, I'm curious what local school boards have done, because I think the school board budgets are all in by now, aren't they? And so I'm wondering what they did with the teachers and that as well.
Yep, to that point, um, we would compare comparable entities though.
Yeah, but you know, I just wanna know what the economic landscape looks like, you know, out there. I mean, you know, if there's, if there's multiple units of government, follow my logic here. State of South Dakota, local school boards, other counties, and they're all doing, let's say, one-point-five percent. Well, we should take note of that.
Absolutely.
Doesn't mean we have to do it.
Yep.
That's why I'm just curious, as many, trying to get as many data points as possible for what uh, local entities have all determined what they thought the cost of living should be.
So I can tell you, I'm sorry.
Well, Sheri had made a comment about being in support of the three po- three and a quarter. Uh, can you tell us what your logic is on that?
Um, well, if you look at last year, I think the average was two-point-five for an increase, and then there was a one percent increase for the Lincoln County employees. Um, also, we have a contract with the FOP and they're at three-point-two-five. Um, to keep equity in the county, I think it's a good idea to move them at the same rate. That would be my logic for the three-point-two-five.
Let me push back on you a little bit.
Go ahead.
They wear bulletproof vests to work. Yep, they pull people over in cars that are doing drugs. They're in a different line of work.
Nope, I absolutely understand that.
And I'm not saying that to disparage the people who don't do that line of work. That's, don't, don't misunderstand me, because I think I'm just saying what Sheriff Swenson has said in public about, you know, the comparison of the line of work, I think he said that multiple times. It's a different kind of job.
And when they start out at a higher wage, and I get that, and you know, so you're starting them out at a higher wage, and I don't wanna say anything about sheriffs because I'm not gonna get pulled over. I love them sheriffs. But I'm just saying that they're, when their starting wage is more than the office people, which it should be, um, then the cost of living shouldn't be the factor, because they're already getting the higher wage here. The cost of living is the same whether I'm pushing or broom, or I'm protecting the public. It's the, it's the um.
I agree. I mean, the salaries are already in. Based on the job, based on their job.
Their beginning wage gets, is saying that they're, you know, take more risk. And, you know, everybody keeps talking about the teachers, and the teachers start at forty-one thousand dollars a year. My staff doesn't.
What, what was the cost, what was the cost difference with the, a three and a quarter? I mean, how much additional would that cost the county?
From the, like, two or?
Well, just an increase of that amount.
So if we look at the wage sheets that I have.
For the people that aren't being brought to market.
Well, now you're just asking me to do.
I know. Maybe you don't have, maybe you don't have that information.
I don't, I don't have it. I mean, I could manipulate my spreadsheets to make it happen, but then.
Is that what these are for, Sheri? Would the numbers be on here?
No, they, your wage breakouts are gonna be on these little ones. That's gonna show you the three different wage bases. And of course, that does it, it's not gonna have what we currently discussed with the, well, no, it should. Cause we kind of touched base on it before, so I had those numbers in there with the state's attorney, what did I put on here? Um, commission, sheriff, and state's attorney, same increase as employees. And then the auditor, treasurer, and registered deed brought up to market. However, the registered deeds was, when we originally discussed it, we had discussed, because they divided the treasurer and auditor, we had five thousand, so.
Right, that's a pretty nominal amount.
Yeah, so that's what these, the difference in these three sheets will show you.
Okay.
I, I think two-point-oh, at least according to this sheet, if you do two percent COLA for employees outside of the bargaining unit, that's two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. Two-point-five is two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. And three-point-two-five is three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. Am I using the right?
I think, yep.
That sounds right.
I think that's what I got, Sheri, right here on this sheet.
Yep. Yeah, between the two-point-five and the three-point-two-five, fifty-four thousand, eight fifty-seven. And the three-point-two-five.
I mean, I agree, we've already put the three-point-two-five in for the FOP. Why wouldn't we do it for the other employees if we're saying that that's what the cost of living is? And what it needs to be, I don't think we should discriminate between whether you wear a bulletproof vest or not.
That's where your beginning wage is different.
Right, exactly. So I guess I, I can support that. It is what it is.
And I mean, as much as I'd like to have you guys make a final decision today, we're not gonna publish this till August third. So you don't have to have a hard. What I'd like to know today for the budgeting is if you're in approval for what Julia had talked about for the auditor, treasurer, registered deeds, and the commis- or I mean, sorry, the sheriff and state's attorney, how we planned on doing those.
Do we have a consensus on how to do that? I think we do, um, other than Commissioner Jevon wasn't in favor of making that big of a bump on the register of deeds. Am I wrong?
Would be a bump for all three offices.
Right, to bring them to market, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, every office was under-market, with the exception of the state's attorney, who was point-nine-nine. So basically, one percent above market. So all of them were under-market. And it costs thirty-eight thousand dollars to bring them up to market. That, that's everybody, across the board, auditor, registered deeds, sheriff, everybody, right?
Yep.
I think that makes sense.
So that's what, that's the numbers that I'll leave in there. I will work up the new sheets again like I have before, but then back to my question, so are we good on wages and everything, right?
Any questions for me?
No, as long as you guys are clear on what we're saying.
Yeah, because we're gonna do the auditor, treasurer, and sheriff what we said for the dollar amounts and the registered deeds. And then the state's attorney at the, whatever you decide for cost of living.
Right, so that's where I wanna, what cost of living do we want?
Right, so, yeah, I mean, do you have to make that decision today? Not necessarily, we're gonna.
Would you like us to make that decision today?
I'd love to have a decision. We're going to, what we're gonna do is we're going to, and we can give you a week to think about it. We can talk about it again next meeting. And then on August third is when I'm gonna ask for permission to publish the provisional budget. So as much as I'd like to have it, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot because I, not that we haven't had time to talk about it, but this is the first time we're talking about wages.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm probably in the minority here. I mean, I'm just not a fan of tying cost of living to contractual negotiations with FOP. Cause then essentially it sets precedent, basically collective bargaining for non-collective bargaining eligible entities, which is the rest of our workforce. South Dakota's got a very strong uh, position, the state does, with regard to um, you know, at-will employees inside the government. And uh, I'm, I'm just, you know, we just raised taxes on people. And uh, uh, there's been a lot of people outside of government who have had a very difficult time through this pandemic. And I don't think one position in this courthouse was lost due to, due to the pandemic. Folks here did okay. And so um, we've gotta be sensitive to the people out there we serve. And yep, we need a good workforce, and by and large, we do have a good workforce. But um, I'd be a little more conservative approach with regard to the cost of living here, so that's where I'm at.
I, I agree.
And I think Lincoln County overall through the pandemic has not been as bad as some places else in the country, um, overall. If we look at the unemployment rate through the pandemic, I think it was lower during the pandemic than it was the year before, so. And they just came out and said that South Dakota had a surplus of how much this morning? So I think South Dakota is a lot more fortunate than a lot of other places, so.
Yeah, and we got that surplus because the federal government gave us a whole bunch of money.
Well, no, it was sales tax.
Yeah, but I, you know, I read the same article you're looking at too. And, you know, when you dig into the numbers, we balanced our budget in South Dakota using a lot of federal money that otherwise would not have been there.
So is there any other line items, when you look at the summary of fund differences, that we want to, me to work on, get more information on? Are we happy with the numbers? What do we wanna do?
Thoughts?
Cause I'd like to go back and work through this again, and then send out the spreadsheets and hopefully we're at where we're gonna be for the publishing of the provisional.
I just, that flood pain management position, I, I wanna know what it is upfront. I mean, cause it happens, will they, any particular department head, like, I said, can come in and say, oh, well, wait a minute, this is actually, you know, seventy, ninety thousand dollar a year job that we didn't budget for. Um, so I'd like to see some transparency upfront on that, on what actually is it, what are the job duties?
And maybe we can get John to come in at the next meeting.
Well, he either will or he won't. I hope he will and be able to explain that to us and submit a new position request form that's consistent with what the job duties are.
So is, then, on that note then, um, are we good with the other new position requests to go ahead and include them in the budget and see how the numbers start working, or?
Well, I, I understood the sheriff's rationale for new deputy, I understand state's turn. I'm basing this not only on today, but previous conversations, I understand the need for state's turning. I understand the law enforcement need. Uh, there was one position on there for, uh, to create a new correctional officer position, I guess, in addition above and beyond what we already have. I didn't hear any discussion or talk from the sheriff, either in the past or today, as to why we're doing that. And I'm not saying we gotta drag Steve back up here to explain it, I'm just saying like, there, there's been, at least as far as I'm concerned in public, and I have not heard, just so the public knows, I haven't had any discussions with anybody about. And I have not heard, just so the public knows, I haven't had any discussions with anybody about these positions in private either. But, um, I haven't heard one thing, one way or another, about the need for a new correctional officer.
My understanding of it was, and I think he did touch on it, was just, was based on increase in population. He was saying for every three thousand people, which he's, well, he said the na-, the norm is a one officer per thousand people and then he went in to saying he was looking at three thousand and assuming about half of that growth was going to be south of Sioux Falls, um, Harrisburg T, Lennox, that sort of thing. Um, that he would need to add a deputy. That was my take on it is that he anticipated needing to add a deputy every year.
Yep, for the deputy, but this one is for the correctional officer. And they're doing a lot of the transports for the jail, from what I understand. Um, on here it says COs are utilized for transporting inmates and courtroom security.
The sheriff's office uses electronic monitoring on a lot of cases so that they don't go to jail. And I think they've maxed that person out on electronic monitoring because, and this is an old number, but at one point when we had forty and fifty in jail, we had a hundred and thirty four inmates, which was on electronic monitoring. So that position I think can handle thirty or forty people roughly. And I think they're reaching their limits on that. And so he's looking at actually expanding the electronic monitoring portion so he can avoid sending people to the Minnehawke County Jail.
Yeah, because if we look at the revenue just from the electronic, electronic monitoring fees, they went from eighty eight thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. And I, I mean, it's not, I don't think super expensive to do it, but that's a lot of fees if he's collecting that much for one person to handle them.
Um, we, Bill, we don't, we don't have work release for Lincoln County prisoners, is that right?
No, since the, since the work release facility in Minnehawke County burned down or was not functioning, which causes the initial jail problems, um, everyone has moved to using electronic monitoring.
So even Minnehawke County is, they don't have a per se work release program if it's not electronic monitoring, that correct?
That's my understanding. They don't. So it's, it's electronic monitoring or actual jail. And part of the, what drives our jail is people go out on electronic monitoring. And so we have somebody who monitors that they're sober, they're going to work, they're staying at home, they're doing things they're supposed to be doing. And when they violate, um, which we'll see a couple of violations a week, then they do the rest of their service, their sentence at the jail. And so, but the whole aim of the program is to keep people working in the community, being responsible and supervised without actually having to use the jail. And so in order for a person to do that, they have to come in and download their electronic monitoring bracelet. They're keeping track of them for maybe a drug patch or for twenty-four seven. And so there's a person down there who supervises all those individuals and generates all of the violation reports. Puts the bracelets on, takes the bracelets off, has all the contact, make sure that they're appearing for work. They're not going someplace else. Um, and there's just a limit on that individual on how much they can do.
Right.
Fast approaching it.
Thank you.
Speaking for Steve, no.
Well, that explains the position.
That explains it.
So do you want me to go ahead and with the exception, I mean, we can kind of hold off on the floodplain management one. Um, but with the exception of that, are we okay with the other new hires, the requested positions?
I'm, I'm, I would personally support those hires.
You know, after listening to what Toby said, it sounds pretty fundamental that that's a pretty important addition because of the added growth that we have. When you look at what Carla put out and what Toby put out, uh, those numbers don't lie. And we just fall further behind. And if we have all that growth, we're going to have somebody do that. So I, I think we move ahead with all the requests.
I'm not, I'm not saying he doesn't need somebody, but I don't think this is what he needs. I think he needs something, um, that's maybe had a little prior hi-, higher price tag on it and I want that to be correct in the budget going forward.
You mean for.
Yeah, and I'm questioning whether that person reports to John or wears a dual hat or is in the planning and zoning office, because Toby kind of came in and I think gave a pretty good synopsis of the position. And I don't know if I'm saying I'm supportive of it right now, but we, there is a lot going on, on out there in terms of planning and zoning. And we're fixing to pass a zoning ordinance or a, uh, excuse me, a drainage ordinance in this county. Somebody's got to enforce it. It's just like if you pass speed limits, some deputy's got to go out there and enforce that, right? Well, drain, we don't have drainage cops. We, we have people in planning and zoning who deal with all that, so. There's, I think there's a need, but I don't know if it look, if it's supposed to look like how it's been presented here initially.
Well, and I think a lot of their employees that they have up there, um, they do both departments, GIS and planning and zoning. So it's, it's a benefit they, because they, they all work in the same office, so they might as well be multi task. But yeah, I think that you're probably right that if they're looking for something more, then we should look for more to start with. So we'll have John come down or do you want him to go and work with Julia or?
Well, I mean, it's his, it's his department and it's his deal. It's just, we get things in our consent agenda, which is, you know, let's move this person to this and, you know, this job category and give them a step, whatever, to get them to what meets with their job duties. I, I guess I want to know that upfront.
All right, so anything else that we want to work through?
Madam Chair, I think that's an important position. I, I, I do think that they do need some assistance up there. And, um, you know, how many times have we said our county is rural, meeting metropolitan areas and there's more and more of this growth and more and more drainage issues and more and more planning and zoning. And I guess, you know, I don't know if this is a package deal or what, but I'm going to support the other three, then I want to support the planning part of it as well. Otherwise, I don't know.
And I, and I'm not saying that I'm not, so I don't know if you're not understanding me. What's been presented, I don't think fits what we need.
So we'll work through that.
So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
So is there anything else that you want me to run through?
Not unless you think there's something else that we haven't touched on or that you need some clarification on.
Is John Rambo coming back? Did he delete a bunch of line items today?
Um.
I, I don't, did, I mean, I understand where he's coming from. He was pretty clear on a few line items, but kind of iffy on the others and we just kind of touched on them.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think there was some fluff. I mean, I don't, that sixty thousand dollar request, I don't know. I don't know that he needs a new snowplow and I don't think he needs a sixty thousand dollar pickup.
Well, the other item was, do you want to tear down the old jail? That was ninety six thousand dollars. Do you want to include that or?
How is, so he said that that's been in the budget like two or three times, then it just never happens.
Absolutely, it has been.
That's, that's correct.
Ever since I've been on this commission, we've talked about it.
If we're planning on doing it, why are we doing it?
Well, it's an albatross that hangs around our neck and every year there's other competing priorities.
But if we have it budgeted for, isn't it, I mean.
Well, because it gets crowded out by other things that aren't budgeted.
I guess that would be a question for our building superintendent.
So do you want me to have him work through his budgets and see where he can tighten it up?
Yeah, what's actually going to happen and what's needed.
You know, one of the things that occurred to me was he had a sixty thousand dollars for a vehicle and yet on the state bid, we could get a vehicle of what would meet the needs, his four-wheel driver, something for thirty four thousand. I was just wondering, and if the existing snowplow can fit on that to why we have that additional expenditure in there. The other part that is fluid is if what happens on our proposed courtroom expansion. If there's a building to be had and, you know, something like that. But I think you have to leave that in there because that's kind of, that's not going to be imminent right away. Because that's, you know, you wouldn't build a building. It's going to be two or three, four years, hence even if we build one.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, Commissioner Schmidt. I mean, there may be, just because we may do a lease. There's no reason why our part of the lease agreement couldn't be where we as the county are providing those services because they're already built in, economies of scale. Um, you know, we don't need to rely upon the landlord to do services and we may be able to do them ourselves. And, but I just don't, I'm kind of scratching my head with why we're replacing, uh, a pickup truck out at the transfer station. I mean, is that pickup truck currently being used? Is it not? I mean, you know, I don't want to get in the weeds of micromanaging pickup trucks, but jeez, a sixty thousand dollar line item is screaming out for some attention by this commission, you know?
Well.
I, I don't, is it really need to be replaced? Can't we just let it go?
Well, the old truck he has, I think, was originally the emergency management. And then that reached a point of no return, so we dumped that out at the transfer station as we have a lot of other things. And that truck is, I don't know, it's got what, two hundred and some thousand miles on and, uh, but I don't, I don't think we need a sixty thousand dollar rig, not when your state bid is at thirty four thousand.
Well, yeah, I'm just looking at it from the point of view of if, if it got pushed out to the transfer station, meaning it's not used anywhere else and there is no transfer station anymore, do we really need to replace it?
Well, is that his form of transportation that he drives around on?
No, he's got a new pickup. So the, the buildings has, I think, I believe if I'm correct, the buildings has three vehicles, three pickups. Two of them are old and one of them's brand new.
We find middle ground.
Well, and I'm, I'm not saying a pickup is or is not needed, but I, he needs two plow trucks. So, and right now he has two and apparently one of them is struggling, so.
Yeah, because it's got what, what'd he say, three hundred thousand miles on it?
So I'm not saying he doesn't need another pickup. I just don't think that that line item needs to be that high and I'm not clear on whether, because he had commented about certain things could be taken out, so.
Willing fencing and heated buildings and don't we have an eight million dollar heated building just west of town here that could be used? Is that too far away from this courthouse to drive, keep your, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know the answers to those questions.
Was he talking about his snow removal for the, for the courthouse grounds?
I think our best bet would be just to have John come in in person.
Yeah.
Because I can't begin to say what he was talking about.
Sure, that makes sense.
What I'll do is we will plan on the twenty ninth, talking to John Peters and John Rambo for clarification.
Okay.
In the meantime, I'll ask John to see if he can tighten his numbers or get clarification on any of his numbers. Other than that.
Maybe, maybe Madam Chair, the sheriff can get by with five vehicles instead of six and one of those, a lot of money could be transferred to John.
Well, they're cars, but we could also look at a highway pickup. Do they need a new highway pickup that they're in all the time for, then they move one over to John that they can use to push snow? I mean, I don't know.
Right.
The only thing, it'd be interesting, if the only thing they're going to do is push snow with it. Um, that doesn't have to be in two, it just has to start. And the hydraulics.
You got a pickup for sale?
Yeah.
All right, so with those changes and then the new meeting, then we're happy-ish with the rest of the numbers?
We are meeting on July twenty ninth at eight thirty.
Right, and then we'll be doing a few things that day. And canvassing an election.
And, and, and just in all fairness to John, you know, I do think he, you know, he was either what, on the road or had some training or wherever he is today, I get it. He ought to come in here, we can dig into those things a little more. Because I do want to talk to him a little more about how his plans dovetail with the four H. And ju-, in all fairness to John, he did do a very good job of creating a capital improvement list. I don't know if everybody is seeing this, but the guy has, uh, put together a very good list of what needs to be done where and in what budget year he perceives it happening. So, and that's, you know, I know we were kind of trying to get through everybody. I would like to kind of go through that with him in public about, uh, how his plans dovetail. Because I think the four H grounds are maybe going to cost us a little more than what everybody thought it was when we bought that building, so.
Yeah, and I was trying to get, figure out how we were doing that because he thought that they were going to be able to build the building next year for the hundred and eighty. Then we're going to get the advisors to give us the hundred and eighty, but then I, then they're going to do it in phases. So I think that needs to be clarified a little bit more. I don't know if anybody else is.
And I'm not sure, I mean, it was months ago that we said to go ahead with getting numbers for removal of the back wall upstairs. So I don't know, I don't know if there was some miscommunication there or what, why that hasn't been done yet. Because it sounds like he doesn't think, didn't think he could go forward with that, but we had already directed him to do that. So I don't know why we don't have those numbers yet.
We will find out.
Thank you. That's all I have. Do we have any need for executive session today? Any, anything else that needs to come before the board? No, okay.
So our next meeting, Madam Chair, is next Thursday?
Next Thursday at eight thirty in the morning.
Twenty ninth.
How's the turnout been for the election? Any preliminary numbers you could release to the public?
We have about a hundred absentee applications. Ballots.
Okay.
Hundred ballots.
All right.
So. It's moving right, right along.
All right, with that, I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So.
We call the roll or is there something? Is there something more?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Discussion on a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Ehrens.
All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.